...meeting of March 3rd, 2015 is called to order. And I would like to dedicate this meeting, if that's the right thing to do, to someone that recently passed in our community, longtime resident, Melvin A. Davis. He was married to Wanda Davis for 62 years. He was a veteran of the U.S. Navy and served during World War II. He had a couple of different jobs, but then settled in a career of real estate. He was later a broker. But the reason that it's important, at least to me, is that he served eight years on the Sebastopol City Council from 1970 to 1978, and two of those years as mayor. Anybody who devotes that amount of time to the city, I think, deserves recognition. He was heavily involved in the Lions Club and the Rotary, and he was also involved in the faith communities in town, and did a lot of really, really nice things. So I would like to dedicate this meeting to Mr. Davis. We will note that all council members are present, and now we listen with the clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no proclamations or presentations this evening. We'll move to the approval of minutes from our February 17th, 2015 meeting. Are there any edits or revisions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? And we will move to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the Public Independence to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda, limited to three minutes. And please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, thank you, Debra Teneras. Because the United States is incorporated, I frequently go onto the Federal Register, which is, you can just type it in your search bar, and I found something very interesting, and I sent it out around the country, and it was publicized. It's the plan, the National Adult Immunization Plan. The word immunization is being misused because, of course, when you're immunized, that's when you naturally have the measles and the lumps as a kid, and you're immunized. It should actually be vaccination, but a lot of words have been done, as it is in many meetings and many documents these days. But it requires all adults over the age of 18 to be immunized or vaccinated with a minimum of 13 vaccinations, and if you cannot prove your childhood vaccinations, there's a catch-up there. There's no religious exemptions any longer. I further found out on the CDC website that they have a rather horrifying word, although it sounds kind of nice. It's called "parente patriae." Parente patriae means that the government is your parent, and it says this, "Further authority to compel vaccination of children comes under the doctrine of parente patriae, in which the state asserts authority over the child and adult's welfare." It's a 1944 case of Prince versus Massachusetts, which involved child labor, et cetera. Neither rights of religion nor rights of parenthood are beyond the state's limitation. Then I found this, and this is entitled "Who Is Running America?", talks about the bankruptcy of the United States back in 1933, and what we face is rather interesting, to say the least, when we're taught this in school, at least again I wasn't. But it says, "Under the doctrine of parente patriae, government is the parent, and as a result of the bankruptcy of the United States in 1933, all the assets of the American people, including our person, and of our country itself, is held by the Depository Trust Corporation at 55 Water Street, New York, New York." It goes on to say that it's commercial liens which have been monetized as debt and under the Federal Reserve. It may interest you to know that under the umbrella of the Depository Trust Corporations lies other corporations, including the Federal Reserve Corporation, the American Bar Association, which is the legal arm for the international banking, and the Internal Revenue Service, which is the systems collection agency. I found here in Sonoma County, under Healthy Sonoma County 2020, the Blue Cross Blue Shield has just given the Sonoma County Health Department $120,000 grant to create a database on each and every single one of us to make sure that we have health coverage and that we are vaccinated. And all children will be required to be vaccinated, and you will no longer have a choice. You will be required to take vaccination. Thank you.
Oh, my name is Bart Mitchell, coming to represent Lantern, which is the organization working for a new Sebastopol library. I've brought the city council, as all of you, our new assessment, which we just finished the other day and was printed by Sprint Copy Center, and it's a document which describes why we need a new library. It was put together by Helena Whistler, our commissioner, Matthew Rose, who's here this evening, our library director, Nita Lyles, and Gail Cooper, and hopefully it'll help you understand how our library, what we're working on, is a long-term project for a library that was built in 1975 for a much smaller population with different technological needs. The design and function of our new library will result from the collaboration of citizens of Sebastopol and West County patrons. We need space for gatherings, spaces, and study areas, program for programs, for larger collections, including books and expanded children's sections, more computers, art exhibits, and more efficient workspace for the employees. Please, city councilors, try and keep the public needs for the new library as your primary focus, with or without this public-private developer partnership that we're working on, that you are working on now, which hopefully does very well. Regardless of who builds this library, it will need donated money to complete it, and that's our job, and we're committed to raising that money so we can have a new library at least within a decade. We wanted to thank Pat Slater, Sarah Gurney, and Larry McLaughlin for all the work they've already put into this new library project, and wanted to mention that Sarah Gurney intends our Lantern's monthly meetings as a city liaison but does not vote. Please, we also just built a website, and if you want to find out more about the Lantern organization, the website address is simply lanternlibrary.org. Lantern has tax-exempt status, and if you care to donate to Lantern, we'd be happy to get the donation for the new library. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Teresa Romano, Sebastopol Chamber of Commerce. I've got three things I'd like to mention tonight. First, I want to thank our ladies on council member Gurney, Vice Mayor Murray, for coming to our board meeting and bringing us up to speed on a number of council activities. Another thing I'd like to mention, in case you hadn't heard or seen in the San Jose Mercury News, the big article, have you seen it? Big spread on Sebastopol, quirky Sebastopol, get a big rack for quirky. Six-page spread, pretty much, a lot of information on Sebastopol, a lot of mention about Patrick Amiens artwork, information about the Barlow, places to eat and play, and lodge, and all kinds of things. So it's a really great spread. I encourage you to go to their website and look it up if you haven't, this is my copy. But we're really pleased, it hadn't hit the paper for more than a few hours or days or whatever, and we were already getting calls. We had at least a dozen calls, and we already had people that came up from San Jose to visit and ask us where Florence Avenue was. So we're really delighted with the coverage. I got a telephone follow-up call today from Arkansas, from the Democratic Z, and it came out over their wire, from, I guess there's some other newspapers you can have to remember that works, and they're asking for more photos about the town, about things from an article that's going to run it again in their paper. So we're very excited about that, and they need it immediately, so it's going to come in out real soon. So that's really good news. Other news on the chamber front, we're very excited that we think we've actually figured out a way to get rid of our Bermuda grass that grows inside the building and around everything and through stuff. Two lovely ladies stopped in one day, just, I think, thanks to Kenyon Webster, actually. They were looking for a project for their habitat corridor project for native plants, and they had their eye on our building, and we've been trying to get rid of our Bermuda grass to get a new project going, and they selected our project as their project, because it's highly visible and was a real challenge. So we're looking forward to having a native plant garden in the front of the visitor's center in the chamber very soon, and they think they've found a new way to get rid of that Bermuda grass. Somebody came and dug it all out, we hope, as long as there's no water to it, just and then they've got some kind of cornmeal and all natural. So just watch that transformation, and we'll be seeing some things happen in the next couple of months. And the third item is, just to remind you, that apple blossoms coming up in a month, and this is the artwork, and it's Rick Olson, and isn't it beautiful? And I hope that we'll see you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got a frame that swears there's only one Bermuda grass plant in the whole world. I've been giving it for a while. I just wanted to acknowledge, I hope you've all read the email by now, you all know, I sent it on the 20th of January, and there will be more to come, because I keep getting more and more information all the time. And like I told Sarah years ago, there's no such thing as a late warning system. But I was, I found it kind of interesting how everybody got excited at the last meeting when there was no public comment for the first time ever. It seems like everyone loves to express free speech, but not many people defend it. Some time ago, the bike misuse path, the landowners, not just the group up at the Blue Bank Center, you know, the Rink Garden, but it really showed me what happens when you mess with people's private property rights. You talked about a cart or a bike path, they're calling it a misuse path. I'd like to consider it also, you called a cart path, because it's the kind of path that you put a cart before the horse, because until we get back to two-way streets without roundabouts, there's really not going to be a feasible study that you can do on bicycle and pedestrian safety in Sebastopol. That's been my observation for over 40 years. I'd like to see that become much more private. The winery was, the one out on Lonno Road, was really premature. I came down to speak the Climate Action Plan, and I was just really amazed at how many people here and how it got taken off the agenda. So it shows you the power of WACO, I guess. But also, I was really kind of surprised the way the council and everybody on the county bullied. You know, a guy had enough nerve to come up here representing his family, and it's way too soon, it's going to, the county's going to tie him up with six years of litigation and permits, and they're going to be jumping through hoops for quite a while. But it made me realize that the council was pretty quick to sign up this fashionable, you know, by getting rid of the Climate Action Plan agenda, and we took it down the meeting afterwards. But for the sake of fresh money, or I don't know what Patrick called it, fresh money, when somebody mentioned how there's always money in these Agenda 21 projects, I keep telling them about. But I wanted to also touch on the polarization of the Design Review Board and the recent issue with the Chamber of Commerce and their article that they wrote in the Press Democrat or the local newspaper. And I've got right here, Sonoma Clean Power, it was on the GPAC bulletin, I mean, that's a half-page advertisement, politicizing stuff.
Thank you.
Good evening, Timothy Lang with the Sebastopol Skate Park, I live here in town. Just wanted to throw a couple of things out here, I'm here for other issues, but I just wanted to just get on the record as saying that there's been waves of youth coming to the skate park that maybe are riding vehicles that we discourage. Recently, there's been an influx, a lot of communication with the PD has really helped to mitigate that, and I just want to say thank you. But I also want to make sure I'm on the record as saying that I'd really would like to be a liaison, if at all possible, to any folks in the BMX or scooter communities that maybe need help in learning how to begin the grassroots operation of getting their own space. It's not so much an issue of exclusion as it is skateboard community really making an effort to protect what we took so long to have built, so I just really want to offer that. I've reached out to folks in the community that are mediators and stuff. We've actually begun a dialogue with city planning about adding scooters to the ordinance. So I just really appreciate all the work in the community that's happening. It's been a real struggle for me at times, a very emotional kind of process of having youth not understand why we're having clear boundaries, and the support that we've received has been phenomenal, and I just want to continue to have that process evolve. So, you know, I was kind of verbally assaulted by a mom recently, and it just bums me out. So I do appreciate just little, little things, whether it's maybe an email that says, "Thank you for what you're doing," it means a lot. So, other than that, that's about it, but I feel it's worth it, and I hope things evolve today.
Thank you. We always appreciate the reports from the skate park, and you do such a great job with the sort of informal liaisonship, and we really appreciate the efforts that you take up.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? We'll close public comment then. Statements of conflict of interest by the mayor or the city council members for any item that is on tonight's agenda. Counselor Reader.
Once again, I'll be recusing myself from the item on tonight's agenda regarding selection of members of the Designer Report.
All right. Okay. I just noted that is item number five on the regular calendar. We'll move to the consent calendar, there's one item on the consent calendar this evening. Does any council member wish to read through this item? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? And for the record, that one item is the approval of resolution and request for the city council to sponsor Parking Day 2015 as a citywide event with the goal of all parklets propose on the state highway the one encroachment permit with Caltrans. This is a streamlining item for the city and for the proponents of that. So now we will do... We have a public hearing this evening, which is to consider the draft housing element of the general plan. Staff report, please.
Good evening. I'll just give a brief introduction and then hand it over to Dan Ritchie, our general planning consultant, for a brief presentation. Just want to make a few comments about the housing element. Number one, it's a state requirement to be part of the general plan. It has the most detailed and technical requirements of any element of the general plan. It's the only one that has a mandatory update schedule by the state, which has varied over the years. And currently, there's, they've created an incentive for jurisdictions in the ABAG area to update their housing elements on a certain schedule, and you get a break in terms of not having to update it as often if you meet a certain deadline, and we're trying to do that so that we're on a eight-year schedule instead of, I think it's a four-year schedule of having to update it. So the housing element is really trying to set overall city housing policy to meet housing needs of the community and set the stage for doing that. The city isn't necessarily obligated to build the number of targeted units, but is obligated to create the environment that would allow that to happen. So the zoning and the development standards and procedures, the policies that would allow that to happen. In the housing element, the draft housing element before you has been developed, really, I think, in about three ways. The policies are the heart of it, which are at the very back of the housing element. One, it's not that long ago that we updated the housing element, and so the element that's in front of you draws very substantially on the policies of the existing housing element. Two, there have been changes in state law that mandate certain things for cities and counties, so certain allowances for certain kinds of housing. The state has effectively preempted local control on some of these things and said, "You must allow homeless shelters under these circumstances. You must define transitional housing in a certain way, and you must make certain allowances for second dwelling units." So that's another category of policy that's reflected in the draft housing element in front of you tonight. And then third, we've had our local process. So the General Plan Advisory Committee looked at the, we had a community workshop, we had the General Plan Advisory Committee discuss housing issues and provide direction to the consultant for various policies. The Planning Commission spent a fair amount of time on the housing element as well and further massaged the policies. There's also state mandatory review of housing elements, of draft housing elements before they're adopted, to see if the state thinks they're in compliance. So we got some comments from the state, I would characterize them as highly technical in nature, that are not really of policy significance. So those have been made, and with those changes, the state says we need state law for housing elements. So if this element is adopted as it is, then we would be in compliance with state law. And so in terms of the policies, most of the policies of the housing element are saying things like, "Consider amending the zoning ordinance to address tiny homes," or "Changing height limits," "Review certain development fees." So that basically gives a lot of discretion, all discretion to the city, like the element is saying, "Well, this is an area we should probably look at and consider changing," and sometimes the policy statement provides a direction, a statement of intent, but it is not, that kind of language is not mandatory. It kind of acknowledges that maybe more discussion, more details are needed to consider making such a change. There's also other language that says that we will, or that we will amend the zoning ordinance to change the definition of transitional housing, for example, or change the process for second dwelling units. When it says that, that's, I think, almost entirely because that's a mandate from the state of California telling us that we must have standards along those lines. But the other policies, whether it says review and credit to consider, really the city has a lot of, well, full policy discretion on what to do, and saying, "Look at this issue, maybe worth making a change here, but let's look at the details later in a zoning ordinance amendment process." So with that, I'll hand it over to Dan to give you more information.
Do you have a PowerPoint? I'll go from the screen to the wide daylight, and I'll remember to cover it.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Kenny, his staff report, both what he just presented and also the written staff report, I think was comprehensive, extremely accurate, I'll do my best not to be uninterested in the things he just went over. So the overarching purpose of the housing element is to identify housing needs, including those of special populations as defined by the state, to identify potential constraints to housing, to identify resources, including available land that would be available for housing, and review the effectiveness of the current housing element, the one that's currently adopted and in place. And then, and the element sets forth the strategy for addressing housing needs in terms of new construction, rehabilitation, special needs housing for all income levels. It's a relatively straightforward process. We begin by updating data and doing a comprehensive review of the existing adopted housing element. We then take that information that's been gathered and prepare a draft housing element. That then goes off to HCD, which is the State Housing and Community Development Department for review. And then we find ourselves tonight at adoption areas. There are opportunities for community participation and public input throughout all stages of development of the housing element. And if and when it is adopted by the council tonight or at a future meeting, it's then sent back to the state for certification. At this point, given that we have received a verification letter from the state that verifies that in its current form it is acceptable, the certification should be just a formality and wouldn't expect any additional changes or massaging from a state standpoint. One of the key components of the housing element is what's called ARENA, or the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And so HCD determines statewide the allocation of affordable housing needs then distributed to regional planning bodies, in this case, as ABAG. So ABAG received an allocation of 187,990 units, and then ABAG then distributes those units in allocations to its member jurisdictions. Sebastopol's allocation was 120 units for this housing site. So the ARENA considers zoning, availability of sites, and available resources and services. It's intended to address the over and under concentration of low-income housing throughout the region. The housing units are distributed among income groups, and as Kenny mentioned, the city is not required to actually build or construct these units, but it must take actions to facilitate development. So one of the primary tools for that is demonstrating that there are adequate lands available that would accommodate this allocation of 120 housing units. Public input was a critical component of development of the housing element. Some of the community input we received during our housing workshop in May include identifying additional funding mechanisms, the need for senior housing, including assisted living, increasing multifamily affordable rental supply, accessibility and universal design requirements, housing for the homeless, affordable low and moderate income homeownership opportunities to recruit and retain the workforce, encouraging alternative housing opportunities such as tiny houses or land trust programs, providing more attractive high-density housing, rehabilitating existing four-unit buildings into better-designed, comprehensive multifamily projects, providing more housing downtown, including high-density and mixed-use, providing reasonable design review board processes and requirements, requiring mid- and moderate-income housing to balance the oversupply of low-income housing and low-cost housing based on green building and sustainable design. So those were just some of the highlights from the community input we received during our initial stages. Some of the key dates or milestones in the housing element update process, so as I mentioned in May of last year, we did a public workshop on housing issues. In October of 2014, the GPAC reviewed the preliminary draft housing element and provided quite a bit of input and guidance on that. We then made those changes and brought that document to the Planning Commission in October. The Planning Commission had a very robust, detailed discussion, I think we talked about it for well over four hours, or three and a half, four hours. We then made all of the changes recommended by the Planning Commission, and in November of last year, we began the public review process. So that was released for the public review in Congress. So, that was released for the public review and comment period, and it also was sent to HCD for their review. During December and January, additional revisions were made to the draft housing element in response to HCD comments. So, as Kenny mentioned, their comments were very technical in nature, and they really did not alter, change in any way the policy guidance or direction that was in the draft element that was sent to them. And on January 14th, HCD issued their highly coveted letter indicating that the housing element as revised meets the statutory requirements. In January of this year, the revised draft housing element was prepared and was inclusive of the HCD requested changes. And on February 10th, the planning commission was shown the revised housing element during a public hearing. They made a recommendation to the city council to adopt the housing element as revised. Again, there were no additional planning commission edits or recommendations that resulted from that meeting. They recommended approval or adoption as presented to them. So, I believe I've hit most of these. So, I'm kind of summarizing the HCD process. I mentioned that the HCD comments were, they were very minor, and they are summarized in the staff report for tonight's meeting. The planning commission, again, recommended approval. And as Kenny mentioned, the state is now sort of sending jurisdictions down two paths as far as the timing for updates. And so, if you reach your state mandated deadline, which is fast approaching this spring, you will move to an eight-year update cycle as opposed to a four-year update cycle. This puts the city in a position where you're just not going through this process as often. It can save you money, and you aren't jumping through the hoops of a housing element update every four years. And that concludes my formal presentation on the housing element, so I'll be happy to entertain any questions, comments, and discussion when you have.
Are there any questions of staff on the council?
And of the consultant or just?
And of, and of the consultant.
Yes.
At one part of your presentation, you indicated that Sebastopol had an allocation of 120 units, I believe. And I think the term used was housing cycle. Did I hear that correctly?
The 120 units is a component of the regional housing needs allocation. The use of the term housing cycle was if you are, you are now on track to move to an eight-year cycle, meaning every eight years you would have to prepare an update of your housing element and receive a new allocation of units every eight years as opposed to every four years if you are not to meet the statutory deadlines.
So, the update cycle and the housing cycle are the same timeframe, eight years if we are successful?
Yes.
So, within an eight-year period from the date this is finally accepted by the state, then we, our requirement or our allotment is 120 units in eight years? Is that accurate?
That is the ARENA allocation, correct? Yes.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure those two cycles actually coincided with one or other.
They do, and assuming you do go on to the eight-year cycle, you'll receive that new regional housing needs allocation number eight years from now, and your eight-year-from-now housing element will have to address that new allocation, but 120 will be for the next eight years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glass?
So, I'm not sure if this is a question for a planning director or a consultant, but, yeah, I'm reading this. We are in the midst of doing our climate protection plan, and so, I'm wondering if there's a likelihood, or if Director Webster would think there's a likelihood that we may be adopting policies that might require a change of our housing element. And then, in light of that, I'm hearing that we really want to get this done. You said a spring deadline in order for us to make sure we get in this eight-year cycle. So, when, when is spring?
I, I believe it is the end of May. I believe your deadline was technically the end of January, but there is a race period, and so, it's, there's a deadline, and then there's the real deadline.
Okay, right. I love those real deadlines. So, would you foresee a potential needed change because of the climate action plan?
No, I think that's, I think that's unlikely, because this housing element talks about energy conservation and doing good things about energy, and it allows a certain, you know, our city allows a certain density of development. And so, I don't think the goals and programs and policies of this element are in conflict with that. And it's also unlikely that the end result of the rest of the general plan would generate a requirement for amendment of this housing element. That could happen, but it seems unlikely to me that that would occur, given the nature of the policies here, and that it has gone through a process with the general plan update committee and the planning commission and now the council. But on the other hand, if that were necessary, then we would do it.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to Councilmember Glass's question, we're hoping this will be approved by May as a single element, but we have, what, a year and a half or so perhaps left on the remaining chapters. So, I'm anticipating this chapter would be reviewed in context of all those other chapters as well, and the Climate Action 2020 Plan. So, in that cycle of accepting the whole general plan, we'd have the opportunity to make changes to this, I would think, just procedurally that would be available to us.
That would certainly be available to you. We don't anticipate that the general plan update process will necessitate changes to the housing element, but it's certainly within your purview to make amendments or adjustments if the council so desires.
Because we'd be approving the whole plan anyway without this chapter, right? Okay, okay. So, I have to say, I like this material, and I found this sort of challenging to read. It's pretty dense, it's pretty dense. And so, I would like your help just understanding if there is one concept in there. And it comes from this. I looked at, right away, at the opportunity sites chapter, because, well, the mayor and I are very interested in opportunity sites in town particularly, for developing a site for the library, as we've mentioned, of this evening in City Hall. And the list seemed to me to indicate outlined properties more than those in the downtown core. And the assumptions seem to be that those properties could be upgraded or made more dense in some way, or were vacant at this point in town. And what I didn't see was a concept that there were opportunities in the existing downtown area where those properties could be made, housing opportunities could be available where those properties to go up one or two stories. It was a concept in the campaign, I guess, you know, four years ago perhaps, that, for instance, if we were to remodel our downtown and those buildings, those lovely old buildings put housing above them, we would have a very conventional kind of European-style downtown where the people lived above and could come down and populate the sidewalks and the restaurants through the evening time. And what we experience in our business community is that we have all this traffic that drives through here and drives out to there, and they're so far out there at night, they don't want to come here. So, our downtown is very unpopulated. So, remodeling the downtown with that second or third story, or, you know, the new buildings, for instance, at Pine Grove Square, seems to me I couldn't find that, just kind of, that sort of vision in here easily, especially through the list of opportunity sites.
I completely understand the question, and I have a two-part answer. The, one of the primary purposes of the housing element in terms of the opportunity site is to demonstrate to the state HCD that the adequate sites are available. The state uses a very narrow lens for which they view and review what they consider to be suitable opportunity sites. And the redevelopment and densification of downtown areas has been historically unpalatable to the state in terms of their acceptance of those as an adequate demonstration of sites to meet your regional housing needs allocation. The concept of adding mixed use and some vertical increases and improving or enhancing the availability of housing in the downtown area is something that the G-PAC has been very interested in and excited about, and we will be addressing in a tremendous amount of detail as part of the land use element update. So, I want to emphasize that the housing element is not, even though it has the title "housing," it's really not your primary mechanism for bringing about that type of change in the downtown. And that's a topic that's been very specifically discussed by the G-PAC, and as we proceed with our meetings with them, the land use element and also the land use map are going to be the primary mechanisms for accomplishing exactly what you were suggesting.
Thank you, and that makes sense to me, although it seems like our values may differ from the state's. Okay, good. I'm looking forward to that land use chapter, I guess. Councilmember Jacob, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I say thank you. I really appreciate your sustained support. It was very simple, it was very clear, took very little time. I look forward to future presentations from you. I also want to thank you for being on time and ahead of schedule and working with the city as our consultant to ensure that we've met the deadline and met all the adequate needs from the state. I do question if the primary purpose of the housing document is to meet our city's needs or to comply with state requirements?
The, it's twofold. Complying with state requirements is a critical component of a housing element update, because this is the one aspect of your general plan that is subject to very specific stringent state requirements and requires state certification after it's adopted. With that said, we don't put policies in there that are not reflective of the community's values and priorities or are unpalatable to the city of Sebastopol as a community. As Kenny mentioned, there are a number of actions in there that say, "Consider revising the zoning code versus revise it to do specifically X, Y, Z." The ones that are, I'll use the term "should" versus "shall," the ones that are "shall" written are to bring the city into compliance with state laws in terms of things of transitional housing, farmworker housing, approval processes for homeless shelters, things of that nature. So, it was crafted to be reflective of the city's goals and priorities, but also to ensure it was tailored to the requirements of the state to receive certification. In terms of the overarching vision of where the city's going, the types of land uses we might see in the downtown, and the makeup of the fabric of the urban environment throughout Sebastopol, the land use element is going to be the much heavier hammer and the much more compelling persuasive tool within your general plan to accomplish most of those visions and goals.
Thank you. How many times did the G-PAC discuss this document?
This document, so, the G-PAC had an opportunity to discuss their housing priorities and concerns, and then we had a meeting dedicated to reviewing the draft in its entirety. And so, they were provided this, two weeks prior to their meeting, and they came to that meeting prepared to discuss specifics. It was a very detailed lengthy conversation, and their edits were summarized and incorporated into the draft that was brought to the planning commission. The planning commission accepted and, or directed us to move forward with the majority of the G-PAC's recommended edits, but about 100% of them, some of them were massaged a bit by the planning commission, and the planning commission's version is what was sent to the state.
Okay. And how many times did the planning commission review the document, how many meetings?
They had one meeting to go over the draft before it was sent to the state, and then another meeting to go over it after it came back from the state with some minor technical edits. So, the planning commission is seeing it twice prior to their recommendation for adoption.
And the G-PAC twice?
The G-PAC saw the document in its entirety once, and then twice for the planning commission.
You know, I wanted to talk about the housing element taking into account all income levels, and I wanted to know what income levels are considered all?
Those are defined by the state. So, it's moderate, low, very low, and extremely low. Don't think I've missed any. Those are based on median incomes for the county, and so, it's an equation that tells you what moderate income means or very low income means for this region within the state of California. And then, the affordability requirements are a factor of a household with that income level in a category of very low or extremely low being able to afford housing, assuming 30% or less of their monthly household income is allocated towards housing costs.
There's what, is the definition of very low and low income in this document?
Yes.
Wait, can you, let me find, let me. Take me one moment to answer. I'll organize my, I have a question.
Three, seven? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Faster than I am. There we are. So, three, seven, table three, nine identifies the income categories, and then identifies what the actual income level is for a four-person household. So, it puts the actual numbers to those state-wide definitions.
Is there, is there any retract for the difference in the G-PAC's positioning and the planning commission's positioning, or sort of what they didn't agree on? Is there, is that information that you have provided to the council or information that's accessible to the council?
It's something I could gather and provide to the council. I don't have it in a digestible-ready form, but it's a component of sort of synthesizing, and I believe Kenny identified some of them in the staff.
Yeah, there's a detailed discussion on the second page, third page of the staff report, the specific revisions that are.
Oh, thank you. And then, you just said that the actual deadline is 5:30, but we need some time that the council approves it before that 5:30 date for you guys to finish things up and ensure we have a sooner or later.
Correct. Yeah, depending on if the council, that timeframe would be shorter if the council chooses to adopt as currently written. We would basically go home, turn it around, and give it in the state for certification. If the council directs the changes to be made and we have to come back with revisions, we start at 5 o'clock ticking as far as getting those edits made and time to still get certified by the state.
And if the council decided they need more time to review this document before getting complete feedback to you as a consultant, where would that be?
It would raise my stress level, and we would attempt to still meet the deadline.
Thank you. I think it's important that the council have time to digest a document like this, that other committees and commissions have spent months and weeks discussing this document. I mean, then we've received a draft one week earlier to read through, the council will see this as an agenda item on Thursday. So, for me, my concern is the fact that we've turned around time, that the council is being asked to digest such an important document with very little time to get public feedback, to understand the process that was required. So, I'm just, I'm having some concern in the fact that I can't say that today I have a full understanding of this document yet, and to ask to vote on this is a bit tight for my comfort level. If that's a necessity to keep the city running, I'm sure I can prove that out tonight. I just wouldn't be as confident in my vote. So, I just want to say that. It's just an honest, I always get in trouble when I'm honest, actually. That is the truth of where I'm at in this process. I do, I am grateful for your work. I don't want to, questioning, questions, very.
Well, let me check with the mayor. It's May, I'm sorry, March 3rd now, so I'm anticipating there may be time for this council to have more opportunity to review this and put it on a later agenda. If we were to decide this in two weeks or the first meeting in April, you're still working with a May 30th deadline. So, I mean, hopefully, we've put this on the agenda early enough with everybody else's work that we might have available a second meeting to have the comments. And one of the reasons I say that is because of our timeframe. I feel sort of out of touch with the G-PAC and the valuable work that all those citizens have done that's come forward this way, and the planning commission as well. So, it might be. So it might be good to have the opportunity to touch base with those two bodies and make sure they all go better.
Let's stay on questions here, and we'll hear from the public. So I do have a couple of questions. And the, with the eight-year potential schedule, when the update is undertaken, when it's off cycle with the general plan update, that work is done by the planning department, the planning commission, in concert with a consultant, without the benefit of a general plan update committee?
That is how we've done the last couple of housing element updates, yes.
Okay. That's my understanding. So, and then the off schedule, or the every four or five years for the housing update, can you estimate the cost of that roughly?
Actually, I think Ben might be better qualified than me to talk about what consultants cost to update a housing element.
A big round number is fine.
There are economies of scale that we incorporated into doing it as a part of our general plan update. The rule of thumb, cheap ones tend to run about $30,000, more expensive ones tend to be about $100.
Okay.
Sebastopol probably falls near the lower end of that price spectrum.
Just wanted to get a range.
Thirty to forty percent.
Thank you. In this document, has the state set down any mandates that they have not provided funding for?
Most of what this document does is it amends procedures and doesn't mandate construction or specific action. What this document will result in is a need to make amendments to your zoning ordinance to bring the ordinance into compliance with the new state mandates and some of the actions and policies within this. The update of the ordinance would be the burden of the city, and the state does not provide financial resources to assist with that update.
But that's required regardless with any general plan update?
Yes, so what you'll very, very likely find is that at the end of your comprehensive general plan update, you will have a number of action items calling for targeted specific changes to your zoning ordinance. And what is common in many jurisdictions is that within a year or two following a general plan update adoption, a zoning ordinance update is then undertaken. And the targeted changes to the zoning ordinance identified in the housing element could most certainly be accomplished as a wholesale review of your zoning ordinance following general plan adoption, rather than trying to jump into it in three months and do it again after the general plan is finished.
Yeah, I'm sure that's something that can just go real fast. So some rather specific questions on things I found in the document. Page 512, and this is just one instance of it. Where the talk about, where the zoning ordinance is, this is a question that I've had mostly due to a specific project that we recently talked about, where an extra-tall one-story building is apparently one category of building. And so our design review process requires design review for second units, and this is probably not for, and it's mostly for our planning director. Our design review requirements are for two-story second units, and yet one could build a one-story extra-tall, and that would have perhaps a larger impact on our neighborhood. I'm wondering if it would make sense to define this in a number of feet in height rather than story.
Yes, and one of the policy statements later in the housing element calls for a review of the amendment of the second dwelling unit zoning ordinance standards because the state requires that there be basically administrative review, no discretionary review of second dwelling units. But the city has discretion on standards, I mean, within certain limits by the state. So, you know, the city could change our current standards, like you're talking about, it could change setback requirements, various other parameters. It could not allow second, two-story second dwelling units. So that is the discussion that we'll need to have when we go to amend the zoning ordinance to become consistent with state law. The city may say, "Well, you know, in the past, we had a design review, looked at certain types of things, and so we're willing to be more flexible." Maybe the city will say, "Well, now that we don't have them looking at the nuances of applications, we're going to tighten up the rules so that we know what we're getting." And that's an opportunity for the city to do that when it looks at the rules.
Okay. I know, I'm sorry. The, I'm curious how this was determined. This is at the very top of the page, and the sentence is, "All the 14 Sebastopol housing units had complete plumbing and kitchen facilities as of 2012." I'm curious how we knew there were 14 and not 13 or 15. What, I mean, it's sort of a, it's a rather specific number, and I'm curious how that was determined.
The ACS is a housing information survey database that kind of functions similar to census data, and so it's based on surveys and door-to-door results and responding questions as a component of census questionnaires. So it's the most reliable data short of the city commissioning a door-to-door home inspection. So it's considered the acceptable state standard for determining such information, and that's the available data that we have, again, short of going through the herculean effort of knocking on doors and checking the sinks.
I figured it had to be something along those lines, but what was it? So that's helpful. All right, I think that's all our questions at this time. I'm sure that one will be raised in the future.
For me, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I just, I came up with two additional questions. I just want to clarify the timeline again. So it's my understanding that theoretically, if we don't make any changes tonight, then this document is adoptable, and then would be submitted to HCD, and we'd be done. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So if we make changes, even if we change a couple of sentences, does it have to go back to HCD for further review by them, and then come back to us for rehearing and re-adoption, and then resubmital?
Not necessarily. When we submit it for certification, we would highlight to them what has changed since they issued their, essentially their willingness to approve letter. So they issued a letter on January 4th. Depending on the nature of changes the council may or may not direct us to make to the document, we would advise you, based on our professional opinion and experience, if your recommended changes are likely to be palatable to HCD or not. And again, depending on the nature of those changes, we would show HCD what those changes were after it was adopted and submitted for certification. But the more you change it, you start to move away from the, as close you are to a guarantee that it will be certified.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one specific question on page 1-6 under General Plan Advisory Committee, and I notice there's a number of G-PAC members here in the audience this evening. And talking with them, I got the sense that there was pretty widespread support in the G-PAC group for a height of 50 to 60 feet in the downtown area. But this is, the comments were made in the G-PAC that they'd like to see downtown heights for, I mean, at three stories, and I just don't seem to be contradicting one another.
The nature of the G-PAC process. I would point you to two bullets above that one where the G-PAC input was to revise Action G14 to consider allowing building heights up to 60 feet. This was a topic that the G-PAC does not unanimous on, so we had multiple points of input, and thus this bullet was trying to explain the range of input. The height limits question is not something that I have interpreted the G-PAC having consensus on. We've had some members feeling that height limits should be increased, other members not as supportive of that idea. And so we tried to reflect in the G-PAC summary comments that both positions were reflected during G-PAC discussion, though it was not consensus on issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what about public comment now? Anybody would like? Kenia?
I just had one note on, you know, in the event that the council wants to continue this matter, that the zoning ordinance says that if the council makes substantive changes to the recommendations made by the planning commission, that they need to go back to the commission, so that's a time consideration.
Thank you. Public comment, please come forward.
Sarah, thank you for the comment that you made. I'm trying to find my notes, and it was something along the lines of, well, I'll just say what I want to say about that. I'm concerned that the city is losing local control, because I'm hearing more about the state mandates trumping what we would like as a community. I'm also concerned, having been a regular participant in some of the public input early on during this process, in finding that at all efforts to get certain aspects into suggested points that were made here this evening, none of the points that so many people came have ever ended up in the plan. I'm seeing edits being made that are being massaged, and that's of a concern. And I appreciate the comment about needing more time to read it, but then again, if we take the attitude that was taken in Congress about the Affordable Health Care Plan, we could adopt it later, just having fun with it. But I'm feeling a push with the date and the forcing of you to approve something that you haven't commiserated with all the efforts that are happening in the community. And I appreciate the fact that you are seemingly going to take a little extra time, regardless of the high blood pressure that may be exerted on Ben. He's getting paid for high blood pressure. So I would urge you to take your time, look at it closely, not be pushed into accepting something that is not meeting the goals of the community. And that's what I'm concerned about, and that's what I've been seeing, the community being trumped by the state, more importantly, the city council being trumped by the state. Thank you.
My name is Magic, and I do think about how many people attended the G-PAC or planning commission meetings, or anything about what the public said. I do think that we need to have some mandatory language specifically about a homeless shelter, and that would state things like we would do everything in our power to help make that happen. For example, tax breaks, using staff time to help in assistance of making that happen. People, in terms of the, also, we could have a housing coordinator to help with that effort in the public and people that might offer public housing. Also, the statistics I saw was 22 very low, 17 low, 19 moderate, and 62 above moderate. I can't really see the need for that, and I would want to have the public have time to look over all of these documents. You also are new, we are new, and I think any pressure to get this done too quickly, we went through this with the Northeast Plan, we had the charrettes, we had the meetings, and then after years, people said, "We didn't know anything about this," and then we had to have many public hearings. So let's try to not assume that the public actually is aware. And I didn't give any numbers about how many people or how many comments. Also, if you read the report, and I'm sure that you have been able to go over all this, but I'm sure that the council's concerned about the fact that we are not meeting emergency housing shelters, we are not meeting housing for the mentally ill, we are not meeting housing for developmentally disabled people or physically disabled people. So what about all those people? Where's, they're not being met, they're not being addressed in this report? And I am deeply concerned in these times when more and more people are falling through the cracks. You know, in low-income housing that's being applied for, and I've talked to people in the community, 80 people are showing up to look at, you know, rentals for $1,200, $1,300 a month, and they're being charged $25 for the application. And this is insane. It's not serving us. And I think we need some forceful mandatory language, and since we're going to do everything in our power, so that when we go into zoning and we go into actual effectuating of these plans, we're not just considering and advising, we're actively working to help the poor in our community. We are an aging community, we're not making space for our youths to have cheap places to start out their lives. We are moving towards being more and more tourist-oriented shi-shi, and I don't think that's the heart of this community at all. And it makes me very sad that we haven't discussed any of the concerns of people that are on the edge right now. So I hope you would take your time and not feel any pressure to do this, and find other ways to engage the public so that they know about it, and they will be at the next meeting when this is discussed. Thank you.
Well, this just answered my earlier question about if you'd read my email, because it wasn't only on the global warming, it was also UN Agenda 21, and quite a few other cloud rebid and strategy I'm seeing or witnessing here. All these mandates, if you read the State of California, Republic of California, 1849 Constitution, you can't mandate people into these situations, you can't mandate solar on their homes. We've gone way overboard. This is smart growth, this is, again, coming from the United Nations, because the Fed is broke, the state is broke, the counties are broke, and the cities are broke, as long as we're dealing with the Federal Reserve notes. We need to put a halt on all this and start getting public banks in the county, maybe even in the cities. Ellen Brown, the Public Banking Institute, she wrote "The Web of Debt," I've mentioned this before, too. We're getting the horse before the cart, again. Smart growth, that's what Convergence was doing down here. That's the old talent of Portland, is the smart growth capital of the world. This is UN Agenda 21. If you knew anything about UN Agenda 21, you'd just see how to stack 'em and pack 'em housing, high density. We're losing populations in the state of California, except for undocumented Democrats. And they're throwing this at us, and we're supposed to believe this? We're paying for, actually, our grandchildren are paying for all of this. So I think we really need to tone down and really look at it critically. We've got a lot of good people in this community that can solve it, it's just that they need to rewind all the operating condition, remember B. M. Skinner? Does name pal all ring a bell? We're not being mandated. The 10th Amendment says state for rights. The county sheriff could kick Obama out if he put restrictions on our buildings for solar or earthquake and said we had to upgrade, that would bust the city, and this city goes bankrupt. You're going to have a wad of private property owners. You're going to have a wad of, and it's happened before. Look at Vallejo and Stockton, you know? We've got to rethink this whole thing, we've got to get critical on this, and look into those emails I gave you, because this smart growth through UN Agenda 21, sustainability, it's been imploded. 41% of people in America right now believe in global warming, and that's what's driving it, is the carbon reduction. I've been going to all the meetings and telling people, "You've got to look at it, though." So, critical thinking.
Hi, Bill Cole, Lillitr, 497 Pleasant Hill Road. And I think what this consideration is, is the state saying, "You need to come up with a plan to build 120 housing units." Is that correct?
We'll take your questions, and I'll compile them, and then we'll get them answered.
Okay, great. I think 120 housing units in this community over a period of eight years is way too low of a goal to set. But if I understand correctly, that this is just a document that keeps the state happy that we're going to at least do 120. I think you need to do about 120 per year over the next eight years, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Paul Fritz, 437 High Street. I just wanted to quickly throw out my support for a few things we discussed with the G-PAC. I'm not sure where it stands in the current draft of the housing element, but consideration of things like tiny houses, micro apartments, and secondary dwelling units on properties, I think those go a long way towards increasing affordability, and I think they should be seriously, strongly considered in the housing element and in the future zoning code updates. I even think that, you know, looking at second dwelling units possibly being larger than we currently allow, there's a lot of people who are looking for smaller dwellings, you know, particularly single parents with one or two kids. It's really hard for them to find housing in Sebastopol that's affordable. And the current limit on, I think it's 840 square feet is essentially about a one-bedroom house, you know, doesn't really serve that population very well. And I think, you know, looking at maybe 1,000 square feet and so you go up to maybe a two-bedroom secondary dwelling units, you know, given certain limitations, you know, it's not going to work on every single property, but given certain property sizes and maximum lot coverages or et cetera, I think that could go a long way towards meeting the needs of a large segment of our population that has trouble finding housing today. So, yeah, just sort of thinking about these alternative ways, not necessarily thinking of affordable housing being an affordable housing project somewhere, but just ways that we can improve the housing, kind of diverse housing, and think about the more creative ways. You know, a lot of people could be happy, perfectly happy, living in a micro apartment or a tiny house, but we don't really have ways to allow those to happen right now. So I think that's a great consideration. And I will go on the record as being one of the G-PAC members that was for a height increase downtown.
I'm just a Sulu stick, G-PAC member, and of course, Palm Drive, Public Health District. So, on what Paul just said, I want to piggyback on and say, I think there was a pretty strong support. It probably wasn't universal, but we thought it was universal, the conversations about additional height. But what I think is actually more important, I'll back up for a second and say, I do think it's important to get the housing element adopted. I think that changes could be made to the housing element after the conversation happens about land use, and that those don't affect, in fact, they would make the state happy because there are, the things that I can think of are about increasing density a little bit, so that that would help affordable housing, obviously, and allow more housing in the downtown. So I think the work that's gone on and the information that's in the, how the element we should all be really proud of, and it's very comprehensive, I think the thing that is most interesting to me is the difference in the approach to this general plan from the last general plan updates. And I think Kenyon explained it very well, and thank you very much, and that is about only requiring things in the housing elements that are mandatory versus just considering it, pushing off, kind of kicking the can down the road for other decisions. And I don't think that, that's a big picture thing, and I would like to have that conversation, hopefully, with the G-PAC, because it is a different flavor. It does make adoption easier in general of the general plan, but we've had numerous hearings about, and this particular issue is about height, and raising the height in the downtown just a little bit is a big conversation, and we've had probably five different public hearings where the conversations come up and been talked about, and this seemed like an opportune time not to design standards and how it would happen in the downtown, but to not be considering it anymore, to be actually revising the zoning ordinance to show how it would happen. And so, for instance, a change that said revise the zoning ordinance instead of consider revising the zoning ordinance to increase the heights from 50 or 60 feet, when the planning commission took up that discussion, the discussion wouldn't be about whether to raise it, but how to raise it. So that concerns, for instance, about what percentage of a block would be allowed to be at 50 or 60 feet, and what percentage would be allowed to be single-story, and that's an important conversation, do we want to allow single-story in our downtown even? And so all of that could happen at that time, which is standard for me. Again, I think this can be corrected down the road when that land use conversation happens. It's a great document, but that bigger picture, do you want everything to be kicked down the road, or do you want to make some strong decisions? And that's what I think is, I didn't realize was missing from our housing element and the general plan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Luteferis, and, you know, I'd like to make a couple of comments about what's driving all these things that are going on throughout our city, throughout our nation, actually. And that's this issue about climate change, which started out as global warming, well, temperatures didn't support that, so then they switched to climate change, and we just attended a meeting that said the new term for this climate situation is going to be climate disruption. So they keep changing the names, it's a word-sitting game, and it's all about getting people's attitude to get behind something, and that's to support all these policies on climate change. And I'd like to make a note that the UK Ministry of Defense came out with a report, it's Ministry of Defense Global Trends Think Tank Report, and they said, "No matter how much we were to reduce our CO2 emissions, it would have no effect on the global climate." And you can look that up online if you want to check out the Ministry of Defense in the UK.
Rob Carey, 513 Orly Street, I'm on the G-PAC, and I want to say a few things about what we discussed and sort of back up a little bit on what we envisioned happening here in Sebastopol. One of the things that I really struck me when we got our information about what was going on in housing in Sebastopol, where half of the people that live in Sebastopol are rented, and the rents are going up like crazy. And the rest of the people, many of them which are older people like myself, if they have a house, they can't afford to sell the house and buy something smaller because there's nothing smaller and less expensive than their house. So the mix of housing and the mix of people wanting housing is sort of out of balance, and I think that people would like to own smaller units in a higher density, and I know a lot of people that are interested in that. And I don't see any way where we're going to easily get money to do affordable housing per se. It's going to have to be a market rate kind of deal with the percentage of the units going at a lower price. The only way to solve this problem is somehow doing higher density. But when I talk about higher density in terms of the building, not necessarily the whole footprint of whatever the development is, I think that it's important in Sebastopol to have more open space rather than less. And one way to do that is by adding higher density. And I think that density, there's a lot of discussion of modifiable buildings where you can have a mixture of high or larger and smaller units in a bigger building that's taller.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that's just in front of us? Close public comment? Discussion? House member Jane?
So, I would say that the potential for a height increase downtown, granny units, tiny houses, micro units, homeless shelters, youth hospitals, hospitals, 120 units in eight years, 15 units per year, while we're in a major, major housing crisis, where nobody I know could afford to rent or buy a home in Sebastopol, mainly West County. And this document is the foundation of what affects that housing crisis, what affects the fact that our friends and family across the board are telling us they can't find homes and are leaving our town every day. And for us to sit quietly and there's some state-mandating document that we can rush through tonight without actually looking, this is the housing element to deal with our housing crisis, and for us to just comply to something that's just fallen on our desks without discussing in detail or understanding any of these issues, for me, seems premature. And I would request the council ask for this to come back at the first meeting in April. And I personally would dedicate time to all these, I just understand the better, and bring these back. I'm not sure if these are, was it substantive changes to the document for the planning commission?
That relates to substantial changes that the commission has not considered. So that if the commission had a policy statement which is in here about tiny houses and reviewing regulations about that, and the council wanted to change that language in some fashion, well, the commission has talked about that topic, so that may not be a change that would have to go back to the commission. But if you bring up a whole new topic, a new program, a new policy, something the commission did not consider, then that needs, and it's substantive, then that would need to go back.
So if the planning commission talked about tiny houses, but didn't talk about micro units?
I think the concept of micro units is encompassed in the tiny house terminology.
I love that interpretation. So, for me, I'm looking forward to hearing other councillors' comments and thoughts, and I'm so grateful for the public this evening to take notes, but I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to really go study this issue and how it affects our town and hopefully come back in April to have a deeper discussion about this topic, assuming that it doesn't, staff and consultant don't say if we do that, we're out of timeline, because I understand the necessity to get that.
House member left here.
Well, I share my colleagues' concern about rushing through this. However, I do think we need to think about, and I'm in support of giving us some more time, but we do need to think about what this document is doing versus our actual ordinances. So what this document is doing is framing the breadth and the aims of our ordinances. So we don't have to have something specifically say in this document, and we will and we shall move forward with micro apartments that will be 250 square feet. You know, it doesn't have to be that specific. However, I feel that what I need to do with this document is more carefully study it because I have to say, boy, I was trying to read through this really fast and trying to wrap my head around, is there some restriction in the aims of this document, the large framework of this document, to something that I might want to see implemented in our ordinance? And that's what we really need to wrap our heads around. We need to review the aims of this document and make sure that it's going to be compatible with any direction that we might want to go, and that's what the shells and the, the shell knots and the...
Shoulds.
The shoulds, thank you. That was over there. So I am in support of reviewing this more, but I do understand the necessity for a fast timeline. But what I think our task as a council is at this point is to review this and make sure that it's not going to contradict some innovative and important direction we might want to take in solving the housing problems here in Sebastopol. So we have to remember, this is a conceptual document, and it's framing things, but it is not defining what our ordinances are going to be, and those ordinances are going to implement the goals of this thing. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. House member reader?
Just getting back to, this is just a minor technical, under the General Plan Advisory Committee summary that's here, I take it that the action numbers, the alphanumeric combinations are the same that are in this document, or did they change?
They're very similar, they have changed a little bit in some cases. So for example, the planning commission added some additional policies and actions. So if you see discussion for Action G16, and it's not quite adding up, it's probably G17.
Okay, that explains it. Yeah, I didn't know if it was a typographical or if it changed.
No, so that was actually one example where, so I think the discussion in the summary from the G-PAC referenced Action G16, and then if you look, G17 actually matches up with that discussion, that says that, you know, that language says consider revising the zoning ordinance to increase height limits in the downtown. Other actions like G4 I might point out says consider revising the zoning ordinance to establish development standards for tiny houses. And so if the council were to like to take additional time to review this document, I would strongly encourage you to focus your review efforts on Chapter 6. Those are the policies and actions. The previous five chapters are really more background information, and they don't carry the weight of policy moving forward. But Chapter 6 of this housing element is the policy document that provides the guidance for the steps you will and should and shall take.
The other item I wanted to bring up was, you know, I have to concur with a number of the members of the G-PAC who are here tonight, in that I think it's important at this stage of the process to, for the city to make a stance or determine a firm policy as far as height requirements, and in order to do that, to utilize the language of revise and not consider. Consider leaves it kind of vague and open to future change. And I think if we believe in high density, and we want more affordable housing, and we want housing in our downtown, and we want to accomplish a lot of the goals that have been stated by many of the members of the audience here tonight, and I believe are shared by members of the council, then we need to set a firm path, and by changing that to revise, I think we accomplish that. And this is wondering, Kenyon could speak a little bit about the work plan that will come out of this? I understand there's a work plan that's generated by this document.
Yeah, there's an implementation for how the city should address these and timelines and responsibilities that are assigned to different city departments, and probably, I think the biggest task is zoning ordinance amendments, the ones that are mandatory by the state are, you might say, the easiest because we can just tell the commission and the council, "We have to do this." They don't need to talk about it a lot, but then there's many more policies, consider, you know, investigate, review, and, you know, what should the standards for tiny or micro houses be? Do we want to reduce, you know, the typical fee reinsurance for those? That's a big discussion, and that takes a lot of time. And so, yes, the amendment of the zoning ordinance and possibly other subdivision ordinance, other regulations is a significant undertaking. It will ensure, take a year or two, to get through everything that comes out of the general plan process and possibly additional consultant resources to help us.
And updating of the zoning ordinance will also discuss height changes and height limitations in the downtown, is that accurate?
If that's the housing element says, "Review increasing heights, you know, the four and six stories in the downtown area." So that's telling us, that should be on the to-do list to review in that zoning ordinance amendment process. So we have some kind of discussion about what that should be, and then draft a possible change to increase the height limit from three stories to five stories, and then go through the process, see what comes out on the other end.
But if we say revised, then that's kind of, that's direction to actually do that? Is that accurate?
Then the commission and city council would look back to that language, and it was decided in the housing element process that the city shall... And it was decided in the housing element process that the city shall revise the development standard. So that's very corrective language, telling that the decision has been made. Maybe there's some details to be looked at, you know, under what circumstances? Are there maybe some step backs or something required for upper stories? Or only, are parcels of a certain size? There may be details like that, but then the fundamental idea of increasing the top stories is there? But there is a difference.
Thank you very much.
And if I may, one thing I might add to that statement is that we crafted this so that in addressing your concern, I don't believe there's any action or policy in here that would preclude the city from making an amendment to the zoning ordinance that you felt was in your best interest in terms of density increases or height limit increases. There's nothing in here that would preclude you from taking your desired course of action in your zoning ordinance update with the exception of the things that would be in conflict with state law, like not allowing a homeless shelter as part of approval process in certain zoning districts. And so those state mandated ones are generally not targeted things like height limits in the downtown or densification increases, things of that nature. So what we've attempted to do was provide enough specificity in this document to make it meaningful and not completely kick the can down the road, but also acknowledge and recognize the myriad of detailed technical nuances that go into amending the zoning standards in the downtown district as far as increasing up to four stories or 50 or 60 feet. And you start getting into setbacks and parking requirements and de-weigh them. And there are just so many technical details that go into that aspect of the zoning ordinance that we, it would be foolhardy to attempt to tackle those details as a component of the housing element. So we've attempted to set the trajectory of where that zoning ordinance update might go without tying the hands of this or future councils when that ordinance is backed up.
For me, granny units and homeless shelters and tiny houses and micro units and higher density, it's four stories, five stories, what those things all are is around the basis of how many units we believe we need to create to maintain our town's livability value. Like how much do people just spend to live here? So for me, the core thing that needs to be changed about this document is this 120 unit. I mean, it should be 240 units, 260 units. And we should be setting that goal, not just hitting the state minimum requirement for people to be able to afford to live here. And then say, if you want to be a micro unit or you want to be a four-story, then you need to be providing senior housing. Then you need to be providing micro units that are more livable. So all of these changes to be made in this document are around us maintaining affordable housing. And not just affordable, very low-income housing. So for me, the concept in this, you looked at this whole document, this 120 number. It's lame. 120 units in eight years? We are, nobody will be able to afford to live here anymore. And so, so for me, we need to look at that basic item and then make a whole plan about meeting that goal over eight years, which we have to start looking at how many buildings have to be four stories with micro units and for that means people, for that means we need to just find markets to accommodate houses, our seniors to accommodate houses, people. So I'm concerned that we're worried about how tall buildings are versus realizing our goal of how many units we want to create to maintain affordability in our town. And so I wonder if we change that 120 number, what kind of impact that has on our housing element?
If I could make a very important clarification point on this. That number of 120 is, in no way should it be interpreted as 120, no more, no less, should or shall be built in Sebastopol over the next eight years. That is the allocation of the state saying you must accommodate at least this many units through your zoning actions. Sebastopol through your land use map, I don't foresee it going this direction, but you could show a map that provides for 5,000 new housing units over the next 10 years. Nothing in here caps you on the number of new units that may be or should be constructed over the next five, 10, eight or 20 years. This is in no way a limitation on the number of housing units. It's the state saying, and another way to phrase it, there are a number of communities in California who do not want to allow any low-income housing within their boundaries. And so this concept of the regional housing needs allocation is the state saying, nobody gets to shut their doors to affordable housing. You all have to take a fair share of meeting the needs of the state. And so I'll pick on a community like Bel Air, but they're probably, I've never worked there, I don't know about them, but we envision them as a wealthy enclave that does not want to see affordable type units. They don't have the authority under state law to say, we will not facilitate any affordable units. They're all going to be one-acre mansion size. So the 120 is the minimum number assigned to you as a city by the state to show that you can accommodate those. But through your general plan and your land use map, you could put yourself on a path to bring in thousands of new units if that's the direction the city wanted to go. And so it's in no way hamstringing you to the type of future housing you might see over the next decade or two.
So, but this is the foundation of those documents. There's going to be a work plan built off of this document that says our work plan is to make 120. Is that what I'm hearing correctly? Are we going to work towards policies to meet that number?
Well, we need to demonstrate to the state that we can accommodate at least the number that they've talked about. But the policies of the housing element are, don't have a direct, I would say, a direct relationship to, you know, to that number. So, you know, not every city will say, we want to support micro housing. The city can. That's not required under state law to do that type of housing. But Sebastopol can do that. Maybe we'll get a 50-unit micro housing apartment project and we'll have a couple of those. And so there isn't this direct relationship between the 120 and the policies that are in here. We need to have zoning and the densities that the state believes. It's possible that Sebastopol can build at least 120, and they do. But we have a lot of discretion otherwise on what the policies are. And it's true that, you know, policy set by the council and the choices you made about height limits or parking requirements or impact fees are, can be very meaningful to housing development and can make a difference in whether a project is feasible or not. So that may be more the discussion rather than the 120 number.
But a policy in this document could be that the city will make every effort to be inclusive of developing 200 units and we could get even to more. It'd be very affordable, affordable. And building heights can exceed a certain number of feet or be up to a certain number of feet if they include 16 handicap accessible senior living units. That could be in this document, which would guide how we develop our housing opportunities for the city for the next eight years. I mean, that's what we're talking about here. So my question is, this document can very well say, we need to develop those units. And then when you go to zoning ordinance in four years from now, right? And you're looking at this document, we remember this conversation, that the direction that's in this document is 200 units, not 120, is correct? I mean, that's what we are approving here. Is that foundational document?
Well, it is a foundational document. Its policies can make, they're definitely a real difference in what is maybe developed or what is possible. So it is critical in that sense.
Thank you.
Let's move on to.
So what I'm hearing Councilmember Jacob say is that this council needs to have a very robust discussion about the policies to make sure from our individual points of view and our collective point of view for the community good, taking into consideration the work of the G-PAC and the planning commission, we are doing what we think is best for the community. And adhering to the values that we come up with, whether that's tall buildings or shorter buildings, or shorter buildings or little units or bigger units. We need to make sure, and I think, and you've said this several times, that the policies are going to allow us to get to the specifics that, for instance, Councilmember Jacob has said. Taking into consideration too, Councilmember Glass's remarks, I think that it all wraps together. So for me, how do we have that robust discussion? Actually, I appreciate the G-PAC members being here tonight. It's one thing to get the summary in writing, these are the comments at the meeting, you know, and follow it, but it's much more fun and lively to have real people here talking to us saying, well, there was kind of consensus and we did grapple with this. It verifies your summaries in their own words. And so I'm wondering if there would be a way to have that robust discussion with G-PAC, with a workshop or a joint meeting or something with a G-PAC? Or maybe we include the planning commission too? Maybe it's not such a formal meeting. Maybe the G-PAC members don't want to do this or do want to do this. I don't know. But I, but I value the direct contact right with the committee members. And I think we could benefit too maybe from a conversation with the planning commission. That takes, that takes the work out kind of, it suspends the level that it's at right now, this professional level with work product. It brings it kind of back down to the people and decision makers and those who are holding the conversation in the work in mind to see if we've got it right. I would be interested in that. Maybe you all don't, maybe the timelines don't allow us that kind of workshop, maybe we need to know if the G-PAC schedule would allow something like that where we could all be here. And I'm not sure our schedules allow that either. But that's, when I'm thinking of a robust conversation, we could do this ourselves at a future meeting. We could put the message out to the G-PAC people, come and talk to us for a public comment. Or we could think of something not so formal, more of a workshop and try it that way. I'm wondering what you all would prefer if we're going to go to a meeting beyond tonight on this.
Is, is the housing element something, once it's approved? I'll just use this because that's all I have. If the council were to vote on this, say, yes, we approve this tonight, goes to the state, is adopted. Is there anything keeping the city from opening it up again before the adoption of the final general plan?
No.
Yes.
I think we're paying the consultant to create a housing element, not create a housing element and revise the housing element. So just want to make sure that suddenly, we have the consultant until the element...
Well, we're talking about revising the housing element after it's already been revised anyway, so.
I'm just asking. We have been, in my opinion, generous with our time and budget as far as additional meetings. I'll go into this as part of our G-PAC summary. We're adding two or three additional G-PAC meetings that we hadn't budgeted for. And that's something we're providing to the city to provide excellent service. We're adding additional elements of your general plan that we hadn't budgeted and anticipated. That's something we're doing at no additional cost. We're very committed and dedicated to working with the city to make sure that you're satisfied. We would hope that that isn't taken advantage of. But with that said, we will work with you to make sure that you're happy with the documents and the service we provide.
And we would honor our end of it as well. This is a professional relationship and I think we all understand that. The, the idea that the city has been slackered in providing the numbers that were required following the last housing element update has come up a couple of times during public comment. And I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody knows that the city's done extraordinarily well in the production of very low, low-income housing. We are at, and again, these are numbers that were in the last general plan or the housing element. So that's all we have to go on. You know, I'm not here to make statements about what I perceive to be a lack of certain housing. So in very low, we achieved 116% of the goal that was set before us. In low income, we achieved 221% of the goal. And moderate was 31%, and above moderate was 40%, for a total of 81% of the goal. And these are numbers, and professional folks here can correct me if I'm not speaking the truth. But these are numbers that are way, way above, I think, any other community in the state. Am I in the ballpark there?
They're phenomenally exceptional achievements.
Yeah. So we have the right to feel good about our history. We've done a reasonable job. I'm not saying that there isn't a lot more work to be done. But I think that we're coming from a place and time that was different. And I think that we're dealing with those changes in a responsible way. So I realize that other council members don't agree with me on this, but I'm comfortable with this document, sending it forward. I think that the public process has been appropriate and has received the, as Councilmember Glass stated, it's a framework. It's not the end-all, be-all. And looking at it through that lens, I'm comfortable with it. And I would be in favor of us approving this tonight. Are there any other comments on that? Councilmember Glass?
Well, I agree with you quoting what I said. I, I do think that I would feel more comfortable with reviewing it more in more detail with a little more time. However, I am, although I appreciate Councilmember Gurney's sentiment in getting us together with the G-PAC and the planning commission, given, given the timeframe, I'm not sure how we can make that happen. So I tend to think that we should try and get this, at least we should get something adopted with the timeframe going to May. Otherwise, it's just going to cost the city a lot more money because we're going to be on a four-year timeframe. That said, this, you know, once again, this is a framework. This is just a, we have general goals. It has, it is not about creating the ordinances and the programs to get the affordable housing that we want to get done. The other thing that I would like to say about, you know, how did A-BEG come up with 120 units? And part of how they came up with 120 units is always like the great mystery of their computer models. However, I am always stunned that we need 50% more higher-income housing when we already know we are totally deficient in, you know, we need a lot more lower-income or moderate-income housing because, you know, the whole county is overpriced. But these are very, like, big-picture economic issues that we can't entirely solve here. But that's it. Part of what they're looking at with their model of 120 units has to do with where are they going to place growth? And are they going to place growth in someplace that's off the 101 corridor, where there is no transit? And poor people are going to have to have a couple of houses in order to get to a job. And there is cars. And more cars and more, more infrastructure that we don't have here. And that's part of how they come up with 120 units here versus more units in Santa Rosa on the 101 corridor where people are going to have access to the smart train so that they can get to a job and that, and they can have more affordable housing there without having to own a lot of assets in order to have those jobs. So that's part of the whole planning process. And that's probably how they came up with 120 units as opposed to 500 units. So we don't have as much infrastructure here in Sebastopol as they do in Santa Rosa or other cities that are on the 101 corridor. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
I would like to propose to make a motion that we adopt the housing element and it's currently presented to us this evening with one change, and that's to policy number action G17. And that we would revise the wording from "consider revising" to revise the zoning ordinance to establish minimum density requirements.
Can you go on a page for that?
I'm sorry. That's page six, Roman numeral six by 16.
Thank you.
And that would be my motion.
Six, G16?
Seventy.
Seventy. Six, sixteen.
Uh, G-17, G, I feel like I'm playing bingo.
That's right.
G-17.
Consider, if, could you please, just?
It would be change the, the language, which is consider revising the zoning ordinance to establish minimum density requirements, et cetera, to revise the zoning ordinance to establish minimum density requirements, et cetera.
Thank you. All right, is there a second? I will second that motion. Is there any discussion on this? Councilmember Jacob?
I think I understand how you as an architect would be comfortable with this document, that you would interpret it quickly in three days and you'd come to a voting on this item. I think that the fact that councilors are here asking for a common courtesy to allow them to take the time to understand this document, that under your leadership and under this council's positioning, that we should afford that time for councilmembers to bring themselves up to speed. So I will be voting no on this motion, I think it's small, it's all the discussion we're having here, and I, I don't feel affected by this council and the situation. And I feel that many times I provide that opportunity to other councilmembers when they make those requests. And I request that this council do the same. I think consultant's clear, the staff is clear, you can bring this back, the first thing in April, use the mayor, I think that's April 7th, and if you use the mayor, know what's coming up on the agenda a little better than I do, but I'd appreciate if this council would re-agendize this item on force seven. I don't need additional meetings or G-PAC meetings, I can make phone calls, I can send emails, I can educate myself, I can bring back the information on force seven, but I respectfully request that this motion be withdrawn and that other councilors have the opportunity to understand this. Vice Mayor Grady?
I don't see any need for the motion to be withdrawn, it can fail on its own if three or more of us would like more time. And I want to say too, I appreciate your interest in moving this over to April 7th. I would suggest in doing that, that we focus on what I'm going to call chapter six in this, and we be prepared to go item by item and have our specific comments ready so that we can do that robust discussion. I think too, when we disagree up here, there's probably no intention of disrespect, it's just we disagree, so I want to make sure to say that. So I will be voting no, just so that we can do this April 7th. And I think it would be good to have it be early in the agenda so that we can take the time we need to move through it, be prepared. I anticipate we could go fairly efficiently. We looked at longer sections than that, for instance, our goals and objectives, and, and we were able to get through the material, so I would like us to prepare to do that April 7th.
Councilmember Glass?
I am wondering what's wrong with the meeting between now and April 7th?
I'm, I'm not sure if five of us can be here.
Oh.
But we could check if you wanted to survey for a date.
And I believe that that agenda's already quite lengthy.
That agenda's quite lengthy and we can't move the agenda around a little bit?
We can try, but I don't think so.
Madam Clark had an idea there.
Madam Clark is going to state that there are a couple lengthy items already on that agenda, so it may be helpful to look at a different date.
Or an early start, a time earlier, a start.
Does staff have issues of changes being made on April 7th?
The whole planning group is not available to be here on April 7th.
Okay.
I'm perfectly flexible to attempt to accommodate other dates. We have a schedule conflict that will not allow any of the principals to be here on April 7th due to other public hearing obligations I can't move.
So then April 21st, is that too late for you guys to edit the document and submit it?
That's concerning in terms of, because, you know, some councilmembers are, I think, talking about some significant possible changes to the draft element, which then might need to go to the planning commission. So we're starting to get into dangerous territory timing wise. It might be possible, but it's coming up very close.
Vice Mayor Grady?
Just checking with Madam Clark again, our next meeting date is March 17th? I, I anticipate that might be a pretty full agenda too, March 17th.
We were just going to worry about that.
As, as of right now, the only item that is on that, well, let me remember that, there's a couple routine items and then there is one item that the county is coming with a task force from, from the law enforcement with their regulations.
So between those two agendas that are drafted now, which even might have more time available for this? It's hard to predict that big public hearing, public issue, but I think March 17th might be more workable, just trying to understand if all five of us will be here then? Will I, everyone will be here?
I will not be here.
You won't be here, so that's, yeah, so maybe April 7th is the better time.
Without the benefit of our control.
Strong narrative.
But we do have our planning staff.
You do?
We do.
True, but I, I, the number is the one doing the actual work and recording what, what's going on and the policy and their assistance is very valuable.
I would be very uncomfortable not being present and then be responsible for my commission.
I got that for your squad, but thank you for verifying that.
So. Both of the two principals can't come that night, so.
She, she's having her baby with the week of that, she's, she's on maternity leave and she's due in April, so she, she's not able to be here.
I, if, if I could intercheck, I think the decision before this council and is unrelated to my motion is whether the council wants to take more time to kind of, when the schedule of all players allows, thereby more than likely committing us to a four year renewal cycle and a probable, a possibility of another $30,000 plus expenditure in the course of that eight year window, we would enjoy if we adopted this and got it submitted on time. But I think that's really the cause of the issue here is what is, in the view of this council, the more important aspect of this to give the council more review availability or to, you know, get on an eight year recycle, a renewal cycle and save the possible cost of an additional update.
And I would also, I mean, as long as we're talking about the financials, we, should this be, this particular element be adopted and approved, thereby getting us on the eight year cycle, thereby saving us the 30 to whatever, $40,000 of the four year thing? If there was an increase in cost from our consultant to revisit the housing element once the full general plan comes forward, there's some cost savings built in there because we're on the eight year cycle rather than the four year cycle.
And, you know, if we're looking at nickels and dimes.
Well, you guys are both assuming that if we don't decide tonight, we have built in delay and we're going to fail at getting this in by May, which I just don't believe. I mean, I don't think we have great disagreement, we may have, have people who have minority opinions on some items, but I think that the notion is that we want to take time and go through this and if we can do that April 7th, I don't assume that we're going to not meet that 30th deadline, that it needs to go. I know we can't make it, I know, but you know, we live in our world and we have to do what we have to do.
I'm also looking at the calendar and I see that if the council doesn't on 4/21, planning commission could do it at 4/28 or at 5:12 and the city council could approve it on the 19th of May. That's like worst case scenario, but if it was even, we could be one cycle ahead of that, so that's still, we missed one planning commission meeting, right? So it still works, 4/21, 4/28, planning commission, it has to go back to council 5/5 if we can do that, and if we have to delay one set, it pushes us to 5/19, council. So that's within the 5/30 timeframe, correct?
Yeah, it is.
But it also needs to go to the state, correct?
No.
Following adoption, it has to be sent to the state, so it, it, it all depends on the magnitude of changes in the vision, so it could be something that we literally will drive home and call it for fun at that night, 4:00 AM, so.
I, I don't see a magnitude, I see us changing from showers to wills to considers to strongly consider, I mean, we're talking about the council adding their intention to this language and taking the time to understand that, provide that, those basic language changes, we want 120 units, we want 130 units, I mean, there, I don't, I don't see, we're not going to rewrite chapters for you.
I understand, and without getting into the weeds on that, the, the 120 is an assigned number, it just, it, it is what it is as far as your, your regional housing needs allocation. If you want policy intents on seeing more housing within the community, your land use map and your land use element of your general plan is your most effective vehicle for that, but you, you have no discretion to change your allocated regional housing needs allocation.
But we could set the intention for the state to do more than the allocation in this document.
You could absolutely make a policy intention statement, absolutely, absolutely.
Madam Clark?
Can staff recommend that, or to the council, that staff work with the planning consultants and the planning director, come up with a date? We do have an initial week in March, that there is a five work, five week, we could technically do it, unless we can march into council to be working with that.
There is a big event March 31st, that's, that fifth Tuesday.
Or look at doing it on a planning commission night, or, or if you look at working with it, that would be the 20th.
I think that that's probably prudent, but let's take a vote. We have a motion and a second on the approval of the.
The housing element as presented to us this evening with the one change of, of, wrong power, uh, G-17, changed the initial word, initial wording from consider to revise. So instead of saying consider revising the zoning ordinance, et cetera, action policy number G-17 be revised to s, to be, to be revise the zoning ordinance to establish, et cetera.
All right, so we have a revise to the revise, and I seconded that. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That's a two, three vote, so we will work with staff to schedule a time where we can revisit this item, hopefully with all people in attendance, council members and consultants and public.
Yes.
So we will take a 10 minute break back at quarter hour.